Called order, the Grant County Board of Commissioners. This is the regular meeting of January 12th, 2017. Welcome, everybody. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. I salute the flag and its standing. Do you see me in French?
It took Gabe two years to learn. Two and a half. Okay, on Tuesday, I introduced the newly elected Commissioners, and I was remiss. We also have somebody else joining us on the bench, our newly elected county clerk, Clerk Castillo. Thank you very much for joining us and welcome to part of the game.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'm going to ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence for the Murray Ryan family. As you all know, Murray was a longtime legislator, a very good one, a very effective one for Grant County, and he was even a better human being. If you didn't get to know him, you really missed out. So, please join me in a moment of silence for the Ryan family. The next action is the election and approval of the chairperson. We'll do them one at a time. Are there any nominations for the chair?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Brett Caston. You've been our chairman now for the past six years. You've done a great job, great parliamentary procedures, and I'd definitely like for you to be our chairman.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So, motion and a proper second to elect Brett Caston as the chairperson for the 2017 year. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much for your confidence. I will not let you down. At this time, I will accept nominations for the position of vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, it would be my privilege to nominate Gabe Ramos.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Is the floor open for additional nominations?
Sure.
For the purposes of discussion, I would nominate myself, which certainly sounds self-surmounting, but I have a rationale that I would explain during discussion.
Okay. So, there's a nomination for Gabriel Ramos and a nomination for Harry Brown. Is there any further nominations? Seeing none?
Second.
I'll second it for the discussion. Okay, there's a nomination for Gabriel Ramos and a nomination for Harry Brown. Is there any discussion? Commissioner?
I want to acknowledge that Commissioner Ramos is vastly more experienced than I am at this job and would do a better job this year as vice chair.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Having said that, I'm trying to think forward and feel that nominating one of the new people, and I chose myself as the victim, makes sense to have someone in training for the future. And I don't know what we will feel like doing next year, but next year will be election year for the two of you, and it strikes me, oh, of course it will not, for your replacements, for your two seats is what I should say. It strikes me that having a chair in place at that time who isn't one of you two might be advantageous, and in that case, this year, we would want someone in training to take over that job.
My idea is that in nominating Mr. Ramos is that he does have the experience, and I think we'll have elections next year again, so one of the new members could have more experience at that point to step up and be vice chair, possibly.
Further discussion?
Which presupposes that either Commissioner Caston or Commissioner Ramos would be the chair during that training period?
Right, well, that would be my way of thinking.
So, I think the question is then, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was wondering about that. My apologies. I think the question needs to be asked if Commissioner Ramos is interested in being the chair next year.
I would definitely be interested, but we definitely can worry about that next year for sure. Let's see what comes between or before us and between us for this final year, and we'll take it one year at a time.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those Commissioners that are voting for Gabriel Ramos for vice chair, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, so I won't ask for the other vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ramos? That means you don't get to keep your little spot next meeting. Don't move today, but next time, that way, if I need to get up and leave, I can hand the gavel to you. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting agenda, and I have one change I would like to put on there. We have former Commissioner Judge Hall in the audience today. I'd like to introduce him immediately prior to public input. Does anybody have a problem with that change?
Not at all.
Is there any other changes need to come for the Commission? Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda?
I still move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting agenda. All those in favor, signal five and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Commissioner Hall, come on up. Have you ever been to where they grill somebody? A little roast?
Lots of times.
Well, we're not going to do that to you. What we have here is a little memento of your service that we'd like to give you. We want you to know how much we appreciated the four years you gave up. There were some trials and tribulations during those four years that made it very difficult for you, and you were very steadfast all the way through. I consider you a great Commissioner, you were a great judge, and a great friend.
Thank you.
So, would the other Commissioners please join me in giving us the Judge Hall?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
At this time, the Commission will stand for public input. During this portion of the meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individuals who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on the future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. And since we have a new clerk today, you're in charge of timing. Did you know that? So, if Marissa gives you a finger, that means, gives you one finger, that means you've got a minute left. So, at this time, we'll stand for public input. Is there any public input today? Milo, please introduce yourself for the Commission.
County manager, Commissioners, my name is Milo Lambert. Sorry, I thought I was already on. Commission, county manager, staff, my name is Milo Lambert. I am the Fire Marshal for the town of Silver City. However, today, I'm here representing the Grant County Shooting Range Advisory Board. I'm the chairperson on that board, and we just wanted to give you a little update of what's been happening with us and what we've been doing to move forward. This year, or, excuse me, in 2016, we had just at 5,000 shooters at the Grant County Shooting Range, and the Board has been working with the county and the Forest Service to stay in compliance with its existing permit. We did have some very preliminary informational sessions to move forward with an expansion of the range or just discussion of that with the Forest Service and the county. We have also updated the bylaws or are working to update the bylaws to encompass more of the current activities that are actually happening at the range, and with that, we're updating, hopefully, if approved, the fee schedule to be more encompassing and solidified from what it has been in previous years. The current Board's terms are expiring here in March. However, with the progress we've made and moving forward, we're actually finding that we're having a much more interest in members joining the Board to continue over the next two years. I actually came today just to thank you for your continued support and give you just a little update on what we're doing. Thank you very much, and I'm free for questions outside of this forum if you have any.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Lambert today? Do you do? Okay. Mr. Brown, your call.
You mentioned outside this forum, but you're available now as well. Excellent, okay. The 5,000 shooter figure, is that individual people or days?
That's individual shooters.
So, if I show up 10 days, I count as one in that?
You'll show up as 10 individual shooters because they're logged by a daily report.
Perfect. That's my question. Thank you. That's all I have.
Further questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I tell you what, you all do such a good job running the shooting range. It's really a class act, okay? I've been to a lot of shooting ranges throughout the state, and ours is definitely ranks in the top, okay? There is one other good one over in Catron County, and they're unmanned, okay? They don't have somebody out there, although I wouldn't want to go there unless we're dire straits, but it's really, you all really do a good job, and thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much.
Further public input?
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Sad that that's better. Good morning, and this is a change. This is nice. I wanted to first thank you all for your, what you're about to do as a five-member Commission and know that our, and I speak for a number of people, at least I know out in the members, that are really expecting great things out of your service for us and that we very much appreciate what the change is, and we're here to support you. The second thing that I want to speak to is something, oh, I did not attend the work session. I did see in the report about the hospital, and I want you to know, even though I retired from the hospital in April, this is my second time around seeing this happen in my almost 10 years there. What I want to say is that while I think really well-intentioned with the change almost three and a half years or so ago, things just weren't able to be sustained, and I don't believe that all of that has to do, I think, with, as many of us know, with reimbursements and finances. I believe the hospital industry is a beast, and it is incredibly complex, and it will chew you up and spit you out in a minute, and what I want to urge you all to do is to do what I think many people have talked about and I saw in the minutes, and that is have a closer connection to the Board of Trustees through a member appointed as a non-voting member to the Board of Trustees of Hila Regional Medical Center. That, taking care of that disconnect that I have seen happen twice now, and I don't believe that we can afford to go through another thing like this. It's just too difficult an environment financially, and our hospital is too important to everybody in our community, so I certainly support your discussion and hope that you will see that as a means to alleviate any further issues that could lead to this kind of situation again. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public input? Yes, sir. Mr. Garcia, how are you today?
Fine, Mr. Caston, Commissioner, County Manager, Staff. Thank you very much for that little comment there. That was great. I'm Jeremiah Garcia. I am the Chairman of the Board of Trustees here at Hila Regional Medical Center, and I know, most of you know, we've been going through a transitional period. It's been very difficult when we received the resignation of our CEO, and we've had a lot of work to do, but I'm very, very happy to say that we put a team together to look out for the hospital, and again, we were able to finalize, bring in an interim CEO. And let me tell you, it was very difficult. We had numerous applications, and we narrowed it down to three candidates, and after the interview process, we were very proud to say that we found someone that would fit the niche of Hila Regional Medical Center and be able to help us transition and move along. Just like she had said just a minute ago, it is a beast out there, healthcare is. The wave is always changing, the waves are getting bigger, and again, it's causing a major impact to all hospitals in our nation, and so this is why we chose this particular candidate, because he brings a lot of expertise to healthcare. When you look at Mr. Ontoveros' resume, he brings a lot to the table, and let me tell you, after we looked at all the applicants and interviewed the three top candidates, this gentleman has really stood out, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Alfredo Ontoveros. He is a longtime friend of Silver City and Grant County, New Mexico. Some of you are familiar with him, but I think he has a few words to say as we welcome him back to Grant County and Silver City and Hila Regional Medical Center. So, at this time, I would really like to have Mr. Ontoveros say a few words.
As is mine.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here. I really appreciate it, taking this time to introduce myself to the Board and to the Commission. Yes, I have been here before. I've been here three days this time, and I think in the assessments, there are some challenges that are out there on the hospital, but I don't think they're insurmountable. I think that we can address them and address them in a positive manner. I thank the other individuals here that made the comment about that the healthcare industry is very complex, and it is, and I hope that my education and my experience over the last 20 years since I've been here, I was here from '95 to '98 as your CEO, that I bring a little more experience, I'm a little older, so I know a little more, and we should be able to take the hospital in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commission?
I don't think we have a question today.
I don't have a question. I'd just like to say welcome back to Grant County, and I'd like to make a comment. I met briefly with Mr. Ontoveros a couple of days ago, and I'm impressed, I'm hopeful, and the scuttle that, from the group of people where I tend to get my information, is that he's very capable, and I've heard a lot of great things, so we expect a lot from you, and I welcome you back to Grant County.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll be making an appointment to come see you.
You bet. Mr. Ontoveros, I also welcome you back to Silver City, also have high expectations and look forward to your leadership. We will later be discussing several issues related to the hospital, and I would love your input on one of those that Ms. DeBolt mentioned in her public input just moments ago. You've had experience in a number of hospitals. I don't know if any of them have been county-owned. One of the things that we are interested in is having perhaps an ex officio non-voting trustee who is from the Board of Commissioners, and I wonder if you have input for us related to that discussion?
Well, the county hospitals that I've been with, I've been with this county hospital before, three years, and I worked very well with the Board that was appointed by the Commission at the time, and I've worked with one other in an interim capacity, and that was that in Ottawa, Kansas, with Ottawa, the Ottawa Ransom Memorial Hospital, who's county-owned but leased out to, we run it on a lease basis, and I don't believe that that one had a county representative, but they were very close, just similar to what the structure is here. They're very close, and a Commissioner did attend every meeting there. I was there for three months, and a Commissioner did attend. They had a Commissioner that was appointed as a, not appointed to be on the Board, but appointed to go to the meetings to listen and seek information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Ontoveros. Welcome to Grant County.
I'm glad to be here. Thank you so much, sir.
You bet. Further public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing. It's an open public hearing and discussion regarding any objection to the regularity and validity and correctness of the following for Fleming Tank Road and Wind Canyon Estates Improvement District Assessment Role Hearing. We're going to have the proceedings, the assessment role, each assessment contained on the assessment role, and the amount of assessed levied against each tractor and parcel ground. Can we turn up the heat?
We have a heat problem up here if you want to.
So, is there anybody that would like to speak on the public hearing concerning the Fleming Tank Road?
My name's Frank BFL. I'm with Wind Canyon Road Project, and I'd just like to express my gratitude to Commissioner Hall, who has been our biggest advocate and supporter of this event. He's helped us along the road as well as both Commissioners Caston and Ramos, and especially Mr. Larish and Mr. Castillo, who have been instrumental in getting us to this portion. So, again, I just want to say thank you.
Misha, you got anything? Or no? I just asked Misha if you had anything. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing if there's no other input. Public hearing's closed. Next item on the agenda is minutes. Approve or disapprove the December 13, 2016 work session minutes. Do you want to do those as a consent item?
Sure.
And also approve or disapprove December 15 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve both the December 13, 2016 work session minutes and the December 15 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve December 13 work session minutes and December 15 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. My natural reports. Approve or disapprove the January 6, 2017 expenditure report? Linda, are you down there? Okay. Can you go through your highlights, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. In your packet, you have an expenditure report for approval for the period ending January 6, 2017, and included in this is a total amount for AP checks of $1,427,952.24. Included in that is a check to Wright Express Fleet Services for the November 2016 fuel charges in the amount of $22,187.59. A check to the New Mexico Human Services Department for the second quarter of fiscal year 2017 for the Safety Net Care Pool contribution, and that is for $92,921.17. A check to Stonemacane Company for the audit billing for fiscal year 2016, and that is for $51,300. A check to Artesia Fire Equipment, this is for breathing apparatuses for the Lower Man Bridge Fire Department, and that is for $78,324. A check to Code 3 Services for radio equipment for the volunteer fire departments and for the fire management office, and that is for $27,927.50. A check to HCP, this is an amount of $25,191.22, and this is for medical management services for November and December. And a check to Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $25,691.88, and this is for the November inmate indigent claims. And also included is total payroll checks in the amount of $432,250.28, and this is for pay period 26 of 2016, which was $210,699.39, and pay period number one of 2017, and that is for $221,550.89. And then there's, you know, the additional checks for everyday operating expenses, utilities and such, and so the total sum for this paid period, or, no, I'm sorry, not paid period, but for the period of the expenditures is $1,860,202.52.
Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Linda? Mr. Commissioner Brown?
I want to thank Ms. Vasquez for fielding our questions on Tuesday. I know we caught you by surprise with more questions than usual being new, and thank you for handling those.
Further comments? Kate?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve January 6, 2017 expenditure report.
I'd be happy to second. There's a motion and a proper second to approve the January 6, 2017 expenditure report. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. When I'm asking for discussion, I look this way first simply because there's a lot more Commissioners on this side. No disrespect intended. New business, so this is always a highlight. High Desert Humane Society Annual Report. Hi, Heidi.
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to the new Commissioners, Commissioners' staff. Thank you. I am Heidi O'Goss. I'm the President of the High Desert Humane Society, and as most of you know, we have an agreement with the Grant County to provide animal control services as well as to house the animals that come in from the county. So, you should have some handouts in your packet. The first one that I just would like to discuss is the annual intake of animals from Grant County. I do want to remind everybody, this is strictly from Grant County, the animal intake. This particular sheet does break it down and give you month-to-month number of the animals that have come in, impoundments, strays, and owner turn-ins. We had a total of 436 dogs that came in and a total of 238 cats that came in. And the next column, the RTO, or Return to Owner, those are the number of animals that we were able to contact the owner and return them to the owner, and I would like to say that the number of cats coming in from the county, the return to owner was up this year quite a bit, which I'm very grateful for. I hope that it's because of our new microchipping program. Return to owner, cats in the county is not generally very much. Was only 18, but that is up. The other spreadsheet that you have gives you a yearly comparison of those numbers. And if you take a look at that, we did have a total of 674 animals come in. That is still down slightly from the previous year, so we are continuing to reduce the numbers. Breaking it down, the number of dogs did go up compared to last year slightly, which is not uncommon to see trend of up and down. I'm not sure exactly why they went up. There were no significant events where we had hoarder situations or anything like that, so it's just a fluctuation in it, but hopefully, it'll continue to drop. Does anybody have any questions on those two sheets before I go on?
Thank you very much for the presentation. The trend line is, I think, incredibly encouraging, but then I realized sometimes indicators go down because enforcement has been lax, not because the situation's getting better. I wonder if you can address that. Is this because actually there are fewer strays to pick up?
Well, I don't have any real statistics on that. I do know that our animal control actually has I do know that our animal control actually has done more calls. In fact, if you look at the bottom of the first sheet of the annual intake, it has the total of our impound fees and the licenses that were collected, and then the animal control responses, where's 630 responses. So the responses have not gone down, they've actually gone up. I don't have the statistics on the actual numbers of animals brought in as a result of those responses. I don't have that with me, but I know that the animal control in the area has not decreased. And we do have a new ordinance, which I'm very excited about. So there is the possibility that it could go up, although part of our intent is to work with the individuals, not just to impound the animals unless that's absolutely necessary.
Thank you. And my second question is just because I'm completely new. You said this is for Grant County only?
Yes.
And sometimes that means you're excluding the municipality, and sometimes it includes the municipalities.
No, this is excluding, when I do the report here for the county, it's based on our agreement with the county. So this does not include any numbers of animals that came in under the city agreement from Silver City, and it doesn't include, we do occasionally take in animals from Baird, Hurley, Santa Clara, and some from Lordsburg and Glenwood areas also. So it doesn't include any of those numbers. This is strictly what came in from the county.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So is there any other question? Okay. On the microchip program, can you briefly just go over that real quick to remind everybody what it is and how much it costs?
Yes. In fact, I had it on my list here to just talk about.
But you can do it, you can do it then if you care to.
No, that's fine. We implemented a microchipping program a little over a year ago. We do, we do microchipping two different ways. Every animal that's adopted out of the Humane Society is microchipped before it leaves, unless it's a very small cat or dog. And that microchip does come with the cost of the adoption. When the animal is old enough to be spayed or neutered, we provide the microchip to be inserted during the spay and neuter process at the veterinarian. We also offer microchipping through our vaccination clinics, which is the second Saturday of every month from nine to noon. You don't have to be coming in for vaccinations, we just offer it during that time because that's when the veterinarians are there. And they will insert the microchip. It costs $25. That's all we're charging for the microchip, and we will take care of the initial registration of the animal with the microchipping company. And then it's up to the individual, of course, to keep that up. The registration of a microchip is good for life for the $25. The first year, you get all kinds of other perks. You get a Amber Alert for your pet services, you get an 800 number veterinarian hotline. They will also pay to bring your animal home if it's over 500 miles away. So for the first year, you get all kinds of other perks. But our hope, and especially the ones that are adopted out, is we're hoping to see the return to owner numbers go up eventually, because any animal coming into the shelter, we scan it for a microchip. There are a few microchip companies that our scanner won't read. I think we can read up to seven companies. So there's a slight possibility that it could, an animal could have been microchipped somewhere else and our scanner won't pick that chip up, but we can read seven different companies of chips.
Okay. Thank you very much. So go ahead and continue.
Yeah, just a couple other things. Like I said, we do have a new ordinance, which we're very excited about. We have been working on some of the new permits that will come underneath that ordinance. There's a dangerous dog permit, a guard dog permit, a kennel, a new kennel permit and checklist that'll go along with that. The new litter permit, which is going to be, I'm hoping will be a good implementation to our county. I'm hoping that it will make a difference in the number of irresponsible breeding that's taking place. And then also a multiple animal permit that we're really excited about as well. So we've been working on the paperwork end of getting those permits into play and getting them processed. We should be, should be on board with that here within the next couple weeks. And I do know that our board member, Mike Burns, has been meeting with the county and meeting with Judge Lany to implement the new citation. And not only the new citation that will go into effect, but the new citation process. Because the intent behind that, rather than issuing somebody a citation and then having them have to appear in court, it should be similar to the way game and fish operates. If there's no contest to the citation, they can just mail in a check to the county. And that's the hope of how the new citation process will work. It's still, we're still in the works after the new ordinance was passed. We're still working on getting that into play. Also, I did want to say that our adoption rate for last year of all animals coming in, this includes everything, not just the county, our adoption rate was 53%. We are, there was some public input during this ordinance coming up and people wanting to know what the euthanasia rate was. So we are talking about putting in the newspaper on a quarterly basis, the number of unadoptable animals that do come into the Humane Society. That I think that that should be something that people need to be aware of, because the only way we're ever going to reduce the euthanasia is to get a handle on that. So we are looking into that. Also in your packets, you should have got two little information cards, because I wanted to let everyone know that we do provide pet cremation services. And we have just upgraded our crematorium. It's got some new state-of-the-art buttons to push on. But we can offer cremation services for your pet if you've lost your pet. We do both private cremation services and communal cremations. And you can also purchase a small plaque to put on our memorial wall out at the Humane Society, which is a beautiful walk. If you'd like to come walk a dog or just walk without a dog, you're welcome to come take a look at the wall out there. I did mention our vaccination clinics. I just want to remind everybody that it's a reduced fee vaccination clinic. After 13 years, we did decide to raise our prices, so the rabies vaccination is up to $10 now, plus the county license or city license, if you live within the city, that you have to purchase along with the rabies vaccination. And we also offer multiple other types of vaccinations, parvovirus temper, bordatella, we do deworming, all at those vaccination clinics, and it is a reduced fee. It's also a fundraiser for the Humane Society, because the veterinarians donate part of the cost to us. So it is a fundraiser for us. Also, coming up here, as soon as we can find a place to hold it, I'll be doing a public talk that will be titled on what is no kill really, and how close are we to that? I think that's important. I think that's one of the goals of our community, is to reduce our euthanasia as much as possible. So I'll be talking about some of the steps that we're taking to try to get to that and where we are actually at, because we are actually very close when you take a look at the Humane Society, the United States information on what is no, what is no kill. So I'll be doing a talk about that. I don't have a date, because we haven't had, found a location to hold it yet, hoping that the public will come. The other thing I just want to put out there is, we have set a goal for the next 10 years, we would like to build a new adoption center in the community. And this new adoption center would afford better long-term housing for the animals that we keep. Currently, people constantly ask me, you know, how long, how long will an animal stay at the Humane Society? Well, we have had animals there up for adoption for over nine months. So they can stay as long as they stay healthy and as long as we have room. So this facility would offer better long-term care for those animals that do end up staying with us for a longer period of time. It would also provide better meet and greet areas, and it would also include a program to help people pick the right animals so that we have less returns to the shelter. And that's all I had. If you have any other questions?
Does anybody have any more questions for Ms. O'Goss? Yes.
Often times when something like a new ordinance is passed and there are additional enforcement issues, it's a challenge to implement the enforcement. Can you talk a little bit about how, what your plan is to implement the new enforcement?
I, to be honest with you, I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of issues, because in the past, there were things that, that are in the new ordinance that we were writing people for in citations, but because there were so many loopholes in the ordinance, they would be, most of the time, they'd get thrown out of court. So I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot. There are going to be some things, like for instance, with the new litter permit. The new litter permit requires that anybody, anybody who has a pet that has had a litter or is planning to have a litter, not a, not a professional breeder, that they have to purchase the litter permit. And then when they offer to give away or to sell the pets out of that litter, they have to post that number of the litter permit on anything where they're advertising. So whether it's on Facebook or in the newspaper, or if they're down at Walmart, they have to have that litter permit available and the permit number. There are going to be some challenges there, because, just because it's posted on Facebook doesn't necessarily mean that they're from the county. So there will be some phone calls or some follow-up there. So it could entail a little more time to follow up and find out where the enforcement's going to need to be. But to be honest with you, I think there's some areas with the new ordinance that the enforcement's going to be easier, because a lot less time will have to be spent in going to court and not getting any results out of it. So I think that, that will make a big difference.
Great. And I would just like to acknowledge your incredible dedication to the Humane Society and your hard work over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's all about the puppies and the kitties. Any other questions?
Thanks, O'Goss. Heidi, for all you do, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Approve or disapprove inventory deletion for floor printers for the Grant County Sheriff's Department? Can I get a motion to approve that?
I still move.
Second. There's a motion in his second to approve the inventory deletion for floor printers to Sheriff's Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the 2017 committee assignments? Gee. Everybody had time to digest all that? There's a motion in his second to approve the committee assignments for 2017. Is there any discussion on that motion? I have a little. The one thing that was brought up, and it was actually brought up by the assessor on the, which committee was it? Parks and Rec Committee, the rest of the committee. In the, in the next month or so, be thinking about how you want to fill the rest of that committee, and maybe we want to ask for public input, maybe we want to put a couple members of the public, and we need some other electeds on there, and we need some of both, and we can, yes, sir?
Apparently, we do have members of the public involved. You know, unfortunately, sometimes people can't make every meeting, and sometimes things dwindle until there's something that really pops up that they're very interested in. You know, we have, we've had a few that are very interested in, in getting some property for veterans memorial, and they were really involved, and we talked about it a little bit, and they stopped coming and what have you. But anyways, there are people involved that are elected officials and from the public. We did it through a nomination process, I believe, three years ago, and they're still on there. But in any, I think just having this Parks and Rec to stir up discussion, especially on our new, on our new facility and what have you, is really good. So anything y'all decide to do would be great.
Okay. That's all I had. Any further comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Okay. Disapprove, approve or disapprove the 2017 Volunteer Fire and Rescue Annual Elections of Officers? This is for Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Sapiro Creek Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Santa Rita Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Tyrone Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Fort Baird Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Lower Members Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Fire Department, Upper Members Volunteer Fire Department, and Gila Cliff Volunteer Fire Department. You do not have to restate all that in your motion. Mr. Chairman, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2017 Volunteer Fire and Rescue Annual Elections of Officers.
Second. There's a motion in his proper second to approve the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Annual Elections of Officers. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Just to thank the folks who are volunteering all the time.
They are.
Absolutely.
They're great guys. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Annual Service Report and EMS Fund Act Local Funding Program Application for the Fiscal Year 2018 for the Gila Valley EMS, the Pinos Altos EMS, the Whiskey Creek EMS, Gila Regional EMS, Tyrone Red Signal District One EMS, Tyrone Flying A and Wind Canyon District Two EMS, and Tyrone Hachita District EMS. I love it. There's a motion to approve all those things.
I'll second those things.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the, to the Annual Service Report and EMS Fund Act Local Funding Program Application for Fiscal Year 2018. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Okay, we move into a discussion between the commissioners. And anybody else a commissioner would like to, to ask regarding the Gila Regional Medical Who wants to start?
Mr. Chairman. Absolutely.
Mr. Brown asked a question of our new interim CEO, Mr. Don Ferros, about a member of the commission attending trustee meetings. I wonder if that question wouldn't be best directed to the chairman of the board of trustees who's here with us today, Chairman Garcia, and since he's here. Would you like to weigh in on that?
Thank you, Commissioner Billings. That's, that's really important. I think that we need to have some more transparency between our governing bodies as well as Gila Regional Medical Center. And I think Mr. Bo was right on. And I know previous years past, we did have some type of appointments through our, via our commission. And, you know, to me, I think it's very important, because this is a county-owned hospital. And being an ex officio type position is great, because again, whoever is appointed under that circumstance will be able to, to come back to our commissioners and share what's been happening with Gila Regional Medical Center. Again, our focus will be transparency. Again, I think we all have what we call skin in the game, and it's important that we open up some dialogue between what's happening and we look at, you know, what we did recently, if we're looking at possibly asking for assistance under any type of gross receipts tax, or what we just completed recently. I think it's time that we all come together and we have that dialogue. It's important that we're all in this together. And again, more heads are better than one when it comes to making final decisions that impact Grant County. So as long as we comply with statutes, I think, I think maybe I talked to Mrs. Webb a little bit, making sure that we, we are not in any violation. Apparently, the previous administration had some issues with that. But an ex officio type person being actively involved with our, our board of trustees and our county hospital, I think is very, very awesome. Well, my door's open to it, and I think the rest of the commission, board, board of trustees feel that this is important too. So again, if this is a move that you guys would like to take over or take on, it would be, it would be great to have one of our commissioners or one of these staff members be part of our transitional meetings. The question I would have is the fact that we do also have committee meetings, that again, we would have to establish confidential documentation in place, because something is, some things are confidential during some of those committee meetings, if they choose to want to be part of it. But again, we can look at our biopsies and see if there's any other activity that needs to be looked at. But I think this is a great opportunity for us to move forward and be more transparent. And that way, we have a comfort level of communication being, coming, coming back to the commissioners. And that, so it's something that I think all of you need to take a look at. So to me, I just feel that having additional team players with us, this is so important. And so, you know, it's up to you guys, your, your team here, to decipher that. And so, you know, I would be interested to see the conversation among all of you. And again, under that condition, there's no voting powers. But again, I think we should, we could also entertain discussion during those time periods as we, as the board of trustees, make the decisions. So to me, I think it's important that we open the door and allow, you know, some of the concerns to be put in place. It allows the county It allows the county to see what's happening, and it allows the Board of Trustees to understand maybe some deliverables that the commissioners would like to see from our Board of Trustees to guarantee. We are maintaining our fiduciary responsibility to the hospital and our county, and that our county, our hospital is being managed properly. So, you know, it's important that I think all of you understand the role that that person would take. So that's my take on it, Commissioner Billings.
Thank you, guys, for thinking. Second.
Do you have Mr. Jeremiah probably have this one comment?
Okay.
Mr. Garcia?
I would like to just clarify. My interest is specifically in knowing that there is agreement between the trustees and the Board of Commissioners that this ex officio non-voting member would be able to attend the executive session since under the Open Meetings Act, Item H, the hospital has the capacity or the ability to do additional planning and business conversations in the executive session than other public entities do. So are you in agreement that this person would be able to attend executive sessions?
I have no problem with that component. Again, when we sign our confidentiality statements, that stays within the executive session, but at least that particular person is aware of probably some of the personality issues, things like that, that take place during those type of meetings. Again, that, you know, opens the door, again, understanding what we are doing under those closed-door sessions. I mean, it's important, but again, that would have to be part of that criteria that we'd have to put in place and make sure that the bylaws are stating that too. And again, we are right in the stage of reapproving the bylaws of Gila Regional Medical Centers, their actual bylaws, and if we do this, we may have to make an amendment to that. So it's something we have to consider.
I think it's fine to follow the procedure. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that that's what we're discussing. Thank you very much for being open to this. I think it's really important for the commissioners, for the Board of Trustees, and the public to, as you said, open up that line of transparency. So thank you very much for being open to that conversation.
No problem, Commissioner Edwards. You just also need to understand, there's a lot of time that we're in meetings, there's a lot of dedication, and, you know, that big salary we make is going to keep you pretty healthy, I think, because we are very busy. And right now, during this transition, we have rolled up our sleeves and we are all together in this to make this the best hospital in New Mexico in our nation, if at all possible. So anybody stepping up to that portion of it needs to understand, we know they can't be there all the time. But again, I think we need to also clarify that whoever could be possibly appointed to that ex officio spot, that that would be our go-to person, and that person, if they can't be available, I believe, you know, we can't be having anybody come in unless everybody signs a confidentiality statement. But I think we need to have representation, that people are aware that maybe that's the go-to person that you guys appoint if you guys choose to go that direction.
We all sign confidentiality statements for the entire county every year, so that may be covered. You are aware, though, that you can invite anybody you want to into a closed session?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe rather than doing this in an official capacity, at least at the beginning, maybe you should just write us a letter and invite a member, and I'm sure that anybody that this group decided would be the person to go would gladly sign your confidentiality agreement and start attending your meetings, rather than us go through the process of trying to appoint somebody as an ex officio member. We don't need to be a member of your board to attend your board meetings or to come to your closed sessions.
Okay, I will take that back to our board, and maybe, once they give me direction, we'll-
See, Abby said just spin.
Yes. Garcia, if we are not able to appoint someone to the board, or you decide not to move forward with that, I'm curious if the Board of Trustees would be open to inviting someone into their executive session, and this is not my idea, this is Commissioner Edwards, or perhaps putting something in the bylaws that allow a commissioner to come in, you know, if they sign the confidentiality agreements and understand that any, you know, issues discussed in there must remain confidential to the extent their personnel matters or health issues come up or something like that. So you asked the question I was curious about too.
I think just like you.
That's scary. Mrs. Robinson-
I just say no a lot. Yeah, I'm always right.
Right. But Mrs. Robinson, you are correct, and again, I have to take this back to the board and let them know that this is what you guys are thinking at this time period. Again, I'm not sure if you guys were able to look at the statutes to make sure that as long as there's not any voting privileges or anything that this is, could be considered to be okay, I'm not sure.
You have staff in there all the time in closed sessions that are not, don't have voting privileges. It's no different than-
Well, yeah, they're staff. They are members of Gila Regional Medical Center, but these are, you know, you guys, the dotted line is a little different, you know. I just want to make sure that maybe the county has researched that and, you know, because we can, we are legal to make sure, or both legal departments talk about it to make sure that we are doing something that is correct.
Okay, and when you get done with your bylaws, it would be nice if we got to ratify them this time, because currently you're working under unratified bylaws.
Okay, I'll make note of that.
Commissioner Ronalds.
Well, I just think, for the meantime, I think this is a great idea, but I still think we need to get the letter written to Attorney General and see if we can't get in as an ex officio member, non-voting member, of course.
And as a motion? Is this a, it's not in the, it's not in the proof I-
You are generally on the same page in asking that question to the AG's office, and I have expressed that based on past opinions, right now, what I would say from the AG's office is that they probably will say no, and that's based on their reasoning from past opinions. However, the AG's office changes their opinion as, you know, they evolve. And so I think that's a reasonable thing to do, is ask the opinion about getting someone on the actual board as opposed to just someone into the meeting.
As a non-voting member.
Correct. And so I could start preparing a letter, and then we could put it on the next agenda and then send it off. We will also have to ask one of our, either our senator or representative, to present that to the AG's office, because we don't have the authority to ask them to answer a question of ours. So we could do that. I doubt we'll get too much, I'm sure we'll have some interest when we've asked them in the past to do that, how he's helped us out. One thing about the, Jeremiah, I know we haven't researched, or I haven't researched the issue of whether it is lawful for one of our commissioners to sit in on your executive sessions as a non-board member. I think clearly it's something that our board would be in favor of. I think that's something to ask Carolyn, your outside counsel. She usually does your government work, doesn't she?
Yes, yes, Carolyn would-
My, well, I'd like to be objective, but obviously the group I'm researching for wants on your board, so I'm sure I could come up with answers.
Okay.
So I think perhaps you should ask Carolyn.
Right. Okay, I will follow up.
And maybe I'll disagree with her, but-
Right, because it is true counsel, the counsel can disagree, but then the Attorney General might be the one that makes the final decision. But the main thing is-
Well, and maybe that's something to add to our questions to the AG's office as well, who can sit in on those meetings, so that may be a little out of their area, but I can always throw it in there.
I think it'd be important to clarify at this time for the public and the press and whoever else, that at least from one of the five commissioners, that my intention on being invited to your meeting or having a member of the commission as an ex officio non-voting member is not to send one commissioner to influence or make policy or any of that kind. It would just be to open what I referred to the other day as this veil of, this wall between the trustees that might exist and the commission, and that this member, whoever it would be, would have no authority, and the trustees and the commissioners would all understand that, this person would have to understand that. It'd just be to open communication between the two groups so that both groups would be more informed, more connected and more informed of what's going on. I appreciate your invitation, your willingness to have us, so I won't have to ask permission one more time. I'd also like to say that recently, in the last several months, I've gained a great appreciation of what the trustees do. And so the public who hasn't been involved with that, like I have during the campaign and then recently, may not appreciate what exactly you guys do and how much time you spend, how much education it takes for nothing. It's very time-consuming what they do, and I've heard that from several of the trustees. I think you should feel appreciated, and I think we should appreciate it more, and I want you and the other trustees to know that I do, and I think the community does.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know that Mr. Caston has been a trustee at one time, he understands the critical nature of being a trustee of a hospital, and there's a lot of work, a lot of active work. And again, I think, Mrs. Robinson, if we can make this all work, I have some homework on our side to work with our council and our Board of Trustees and work with our bylaws committee to make sure that we can get all this documentation in place. Again, if the AG puts a wall between us, they're still a part of being welcome to come in and attend any of our regular meetings if somehow the executive sessions are not allowable. And, you know, we have to honor what, we don't want to break any statutes, any laws. So, you know, we're all open to these things because it's so important. Governing bodies need to understand what's happening, and again, you guys are the ones that appoint the trustees and have trust in us to help our CEO do their job. And again, fiduciary responsibility is highest priority, but really, I really feel the quality of service we provide to our patients is probably the best and highest quality of performance we need to do as a hospital. So it's numerous things that tie to this, but it's a good question, a good challenging question from our commissioners. So let's do some homework. It gives them time on your side to look at things, and it gives us time to clarify where we are too, and make sure that the two parties can come together so we do have that transparency and we do have that comfort level of what's going on with our hospital and how our commissioners and our community perceive where our hospital is going.
Okay, so I think, Chairman Garcia, at this time, I'm going to informally, because I can't formally ask, I'm going to informally ask that you go back to your board and request that they invite a GRMC liaison from the commission, and that's what we would call it, so it's not a board member or whatever, to attend your board meetings. And make it revocable so it's easy to get out of it if it's not working.
Okay.
And we'll deal with that if that happens, but make it revocable. Because if it gets in there and it becomes a wreck, I want you guys to go and say, nope, didn't happen.
Time out. Right.
And then we'll go, we'll do what we have to do from there. But I don't want to impede on you. The reason they have this separation is because setting in there as a trustee, having a commissioner look over your shoulder is very intimidating, and you may not voice your full opinion, and then no way on earth do I want that to happen. So if we just do it short-term, see if it works, that would be my druthers, rather than go through the whole appointment process.
And, you know, it's vice versa both ways.
So, generally legal, and we'll have your opinion reviewed by Abby, and please bring us your bylaws.
Okay, we will do that, because we're in the review process right now, so we haven't approved them or anything. Our next board meeting, we should be having that discussion on our bylaws. So I will get with our bylaws chair, which is, I believe, Dr. Wachiko, and we will have some discussion here. And again, I'll follow through with our council, and again, I have to bring this up, and I'll put it on our agenda for this month's meeting pertaining to the request that the commissioners are asking. And that, but again, this is simple to write a letter of inviting a commissioner to join us during our meetings. I think we're all clear? Any other questions or concerns?
Okay, I'm done. Does anybody else have any seconds, Sidney? Thanks for coming, thanks for your service. We appreciate everything you and the other trustees do and all your management and all your healthcare providers. We still have one of the greatest little hospitals in the nation. We just got a money problem, and we're going to get that fixed.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Okay. I've lost my agenda. Okay, 2017 Annual Assessor's Report pursuant to the New Mexico Statutes Annotated 7-3616-E. We have coffee, go to bathroom, just up. No, but if you need to get coffee or whatever, we have five people now, we don't have the office here.
I'll just call him again to come out and hook me up.
Colorful, Raul.
Excuse me?
I said that's colorful.
I just got to get Ben from the back so he can actually. But we've done this once before, twice, three times, or whatever.
I tell you what, Mr. Assessor, while you're getting that ready, we're going to take a brief recess, and then when you get ready, we'll come back. Call back door to the Board of County Commissioners. We're standing currently for the Assessor's Report. Mr. Assessor?
Well, for starters, happy new year, and it's nice to see all those pretty faces up there. And my tocaro here, Sheriff, already looked at me, how long is it going to last? I don't plan this, I really don't, you know, I just, you know, I get started and it just goes on and on and on. But I thought I'd go ahead and do the presentation first round out of the box for the new commissioners so they can understand what the process goes in the Assessor's Office, because I'm going to have to redo another presentation before we do our certifications. And I understand, some of the commissioners understand the process of my PTD I's, II's, III's, XI and XIII's, and when I do certify, it's by June. But the other presentation will probably be by April, so I'll be brief, okay there, Chairman?
Well, I understand the sheriff's going to arrest you if you-
I know, he already has the cop car out there. I would just like to acknowledge one of my employees, and this is Lorraine's unit, and I thought my chief appraisal was going to be here also, but we're pretty busy in that office due to the rendition period. So like I said, I'll be brief, I'll see whatever I can do. For starters, we're the only elected official that actually gets evaluated by the state, and all this information will be in your email box probably by noon today, if I can get out of here. But I did send you a small synopsis about the Assessor's Office valuation of 2017, our sales analysis, our GIS parcel mapping, agricultural special method evaluation, business personal property, manufactured home, building permits, scanning our property record cards, historical models compared to our MS Tyler Eagle, and then we definitely have to talk about the duty percent cap, preparing the upcoming legislation, and if you want really to get confused, that's a pretty interesting piece, and the reappraisal plan where we're actually in a two-year cycle, and the guidelines for property values. For starters, on our sales, I have to show certain statistics on where are COD, COV, and if you understand statistics, we have to do a sales racial analysis to the state of New Mexico, and that usually is by August. of New Mexico and that usually is by August. And in the past, we actually, what they call shooting sales, we actually put the value, put the value on what the property was sold. Now, I thank my staff, a gentleman by the name of Matthew Meyer is actually, does all my statistics and he comps everything out before we put it on the books. By doing that, it removes the cap of the 3% and it actually is put on as market. I will be more specific on all these numbers and I look at Commissioner Brown, we're going to have fun with all these numbers, I just know that. So not only that, is once we comp everything out, we do have a good relationship with the realtors on comparing values and numbers and so on. We have, we're still about two, three weeks behind on our sales because we, once we get an affidavit, we actually have to look at the property within a week, week and a half so we can look at the property, how it's sold right there and then. This page right here, there's probably about 40 other pages that go with it. And I don't think you guys want to go through that at this moment. Our GIS mapper, her name is Tracy Burnside and she has been an asset for my office. When I first walked in, I did not have a mapping department, I did not have a GIS department. And we actually started from scratch and now we are 100% up and running. Right now, we're probably current on all our deeds that process through the county clerk's office. And these are actually her jobs that are cast and she, matter of fact, does more than, you know, than she actually is doing due to the fact that we still, we're probably the only county in the state, and I decided to make this decision where we're actually still, we still actually have MyLars. And this is a piece of plastic where you actually put all your parcel identifiers on all our maps here in Grant County. And it's quite interesting because the last time I went to a archive up in Santa Fe and I told them, I said, you know what, we're still on MyLars. And they were happy than anything due to the fact that they last a lot longer than electronic archives. So thanks to Tracy, she has really built the GIS mapping department. And here's a breakdown of our average numbers of documents. Document proceeded from 2016, how many new parcels, total parcels combined with the administrators and the request. She is, she has taken the IWO course on the fundamentals of real estate appraisal and I do want her to take other courses also along the road. Once again, if you commissioners would like to come in and look at our parcel mapping, it's really doing a great job. Thank you, Tracy. On livestock, we have a gentleman by the name of Bronn Gary. And if you've seen Bronn Gary, he's, he can probably hit a softball about 500 feet up in the air and unable to catch it, to be honest with you. We did that the other day. But on the livestock, we actually have to really keep an eye on what's going on with the livestock. I understand that we do have the special method evaluation and what happens with the special method evaluation, you have to apply for it. By animal units, one animal unit is for 53.3 acres. Actually, if you actually read the statutes and the laws, it is actually made for sections when it was first written that is valued at $5.40 an acre on the special method evaluation. What has happened is a lot of people have seen the special method evaluation because it's only valued at $5.40 an acre compared to miscellaneous land depending on the county from $3,000 to about $10,000 an acre. It is such an inequity when I attend these rev staff meetings, that's one of the big discussions that's been going on for the last three to five months before we get into the legislative session. We haven't gotten to write any legislation about that, but one animal unit for 53.3 acres. And let me just say this, it can't be a horse, it has to be actually livestock, cattle, sheep, goat. And all these forums are accessed through the internet where you, where you call, where you actually go in and qualify for the special method evaluation. And like I said, we are going to go every parcel that when we receive these renditions that are new and it shows that they're asking for the special method evaluation is going to be reviewed. And not only that, they have to have cattle or at least for the cattle itself. Business personal property, I would just like to say Lorraine is actually working on business personal property. And what I've done in my office is each individual has their own job, even though we're all cross-trained and we can actually do everybody else's job. She actually has been working on these businesses, on the business personal property. This is a self-rendering state and what it is on a self-rendering state, the businesses have to actually render the state of Mexico. That's all the 33 counties. Quite interesting, thank you for the clerk's office, we actually brought some information. 253 business license at 2016 were received from the clerk's office. Out of the 253, we have currently only have 19 in our system at this moment. We're going to send out a letter. However, we do have another, what's the count on total accounts we have on personal business property, Lorraine? Okay, so, well, 587. So on top of that, we're actually going to send a letter, we're actually going to set a form, we're actually going to set a depreciation table for these individuals and then, once again, seven other businesses no longer on business. Building permits, we are having such an issue with CID, that's the New Mexico Construction Industry Division, to try and get our permits for us to review, it's quite, it's quite a chore just to do that. So now they're actually finally sending us the information on our building permits. And that's all for valuation maintenance, deferred maintenance, but the net new, we actually put it on the books and it is on this net new. And I could probably talk about net new valuation maintenance for about an hour and a half, but we could go into detail down the road. We are now scanning our property record cards. Our documents on Eagle system, we can actually doc, we can actually scan our 65 years and older, we can scan all our veteran exemptions, we can scan all our property record cards. When I came in in 1981, they sat us in a room with a bunch of property record cards, blank as anything, that was the first reappraisal ever done in Grant County and that was in 1981. They put us in the room that morning, we had a four-hour training and by that afternoon, we were in our own vehicles going house to house to house to measure and pick up all the components. Very interesting process and I think I've conducted close to 12 reappraisals when, you know, since 1981. The interesting thing about it is our legislators get involved about our, not only on our exemptions, but they also get involved about our caps, tax lightning and has created a problem for the last 37 years and property tax and property valuation is an enormous mess at this moment and we're going to tax reform at this time. What I mean about this property record cards, that is the original document from the assessor's office and it's one of the most important documents. We are going to scan everything, we're going to try to be paperless and all this. On the historical models to compare on M/ S, and that's what they call the Marshall and Swift, our historical values on our last database called Triadic. Now, we're trying to compare, we're trying to move everything to our actual models. We actually build these models, we have these appraisals on there, we break every component down from sheds, garages, porches and so on. The interesting thing about it is whenever we go out in the field and we have a historical model from the Triadic system, we have no idea, we have no idea if all the outbuildings are on and it's a very, it's very confusing. So we're actually working on that to correct that. There's about 5,000 accounts that we have to convert it from the historical to the Marshall Swift on Tyler Eagle technology. Our building permits, once again, we do receive them, Misty Trujillo, she actually has done a sensational job working on these building permits. This is the reason we have reappraisals. And I'm going to get into in depth about the reappraisals. Here's a breakdown on 2016 and a lot of them are on a percentage. If you go out there, there's a roof, the windows, the floor, we do put it on the assessment roll as a percentage. It depends how much the property, how much the building is in progress, what they call in the rough, when they call it, it's almost 100% complete. Once we get the occupancy, that's when we put it on at 100% of value. Let's say if you're still working on your house in 2017 and you've completed in April of 2017, I will not put that on the books until the year 2018 by state statutes. 3% cap, prepare upcoming legislation. Well, let's just talk about the 3% cap. I have not done the 3% cap last year or the year before last due to the fact that I did not have the proper staffing and the data to substantiate for me to actually put the 3% cap. So we're going to break that down a little bit more on the 3% cap, on how much more taxes is going to be brought in on the 3% cap. What it is, you're adding the 3% cap only on the residential side and it's on the full value, not on the taxable value or the net taxable value, it's only on the full value side of the 3% cap. The preparation of upcoming legislation is very interesting. I've been attending all the rev staff meetings and that's one of the biggest, hottest, top issue in the state of New Mexico due to the fact that they want to increase the cap from 3%, 7%, 10% and it depends on the time of occupancy and they're also going to bring in income. And that piece of legislation is going to need a lot of work. Thanks to my chief appraiser, Misty Trujillo, she actually broke down the 3% cap. Hey man, the color red really comes out pretty good here.
I can't read that.
Oh, you can't read that? Well, well, hold on.
Can everybody else read? Black on red, it's a little hard.
Okay. Well, I'll do the white. Well, this one, it was because of the spreadsheet. So if you break it down, what I've done, I've actually broken it down to every school district, one out, well, one in, one out, 2B, 2C. And this is actually just on the residential side. And she broke it down on taxes, the 3% of the year 2017, total residential valuation and the difference in taxes. And if you look at it, it doesn't really amount to that much tax. When you put 3% on the full side?
I wanted to explain to these guys what the, the one in, the one out, the 2B.
Okay.
Because I don't think they understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the one in means it's inside the city limits, the one out means outside the city limits.
City, silver city, city limits.
Yes. And then 2B is actually paired, 2C, Santa Clara, 2H, Hurley, 2out is like the members' area, San Lorenzo. And we do have residential and non-residential. The interesting thing about it is, is we're only dealing with residential properties. That's it when it comes down to the 3% cap. And the reason why, because of the non-residential, we can actually increase values up to about 130%. However, I don't touch my commercial properties at this moment because I don't have that much sales to substantiate, to do any increases. If it does, we get a boom, I can adjust them to whatever it comes up to market. But due to the cap of the 3% cap, in 2002, there was such an interesting market going on where they were called tax lightning. It happened in Santa Fe, we had to keep the values down. Ben Lohan was the Speaker of the House and was going to save Santa Fe where people cannot, will not pay the tax more than whatever. It is such an inequity, the cap is such an inequity. For example, my tocaro here has a $100,000 home and he has, and Mr. Sanzillo has the same home, but he buys it at $250,000. What happens, and this is what is considered and what it's called, is he's only going to be capped out 3% per year. And guess what? Mr. Sanzillo is going to be paying a $250,000 home and it's called the welcome tax. It is such an inequity, it is a problem, we want to stay current and correct, but it is, and that's exactly. We do remove the cap, then it's going to hurt all the low side because you're going to increase value. So, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place, so what do you do? So now we're trying to do tax reform with the legislator, with the rev staff and see exactly how we're going to do with the occupancy about the 3% cap. I could be here talking about the cap and the legislation on that, so I'm just going to go ahead and move on. Here is the breakdown, okay, and I'm just going to go through this. They asked us at the last rev staff meeting where Bernal County, Sandalara County, where they have enormous staff, they actually broke down the actual percentages on what percentage the valuation and assessment is at. Who's at 100%, who's at 90%, who's at 80%? And they actually broke that down and placed it on a map where it's all color coded where the areas that we have to work on. And thanks to Mr. Myers, have ran a lot of the numbers statistically and broke it down in depth. I'm not going to go through every number because I'll be here for another hour just on this topic. But if you look at it, and like I said, once again, this will be in your email box by noon, the proposed legislation, if you break it down, what percentage everybody is at, it's going to show you per each, each percentage on where this county's at. And let me tell you, Grant County is not bad. Grant County has done a very good job. And here are the percentages with how many accounts, from 100%, 91%, 100%, 22%, 75% to 91%. And the left numbers like the 5, 8, 2, 0, it shows you from 91% to 100%, the 3,133 is 22% of 75 to 91%. And, you know, I live and dream these numbers every night when I go to bed, so I'll go ahead and let you guys look at it in depth. So the impact for the state of New Mexico is going to be, well, let's look at Sandalara County or let's look into Coral County, where are their percentages on the cap to see exactly where all the inequities are. And granted, there's probably only about 11 counties that are actually doing the job where the percentages of the cap needs to be before they start doing any legislation about if they're going to increase the 3, the 5, the 7 or the 10% cap. I will send you the piece of legislation so you guys can understand what's going on with that piece of legislation. Here is the pie chart where it's going to show what's at 91%, 75%, 50 to 75% and it's all broken down on the chart. But if you look at the 507 accounts, those, that's, we have to get in to check those out. Those are the ones that are actually what they call forcing the value and an override value. With those override values, we don't know because we don't have any models, we don't have any appraisals on them, they're either improvements only, same with that one where it shows the 25 to the 50%. So we're going to target that area to see exactly where we are with those values before, you know, we start sending that.
Thank you, Raul. Is, does this pie chart reflect just a number of accounts or is it weighted by value or size?
It is just valued by accounts.
Just number of accounts. So my would-be property is one and someone else's million acres is one.
That is correct.
Okay.
And remember, remember, it only reflects on the residential side. And this is the, this is the problem when we try to stratify our information when we have to pull out the non-residential from the residential. Like for example, if we have one acre and we have beyond as a home site, but you still have about 30 or 40 acres and that is going to be stratified due to the fact that it's non-residential, so we're trying to break it down even more. And this information, I have to send it to the rev staff meeting probably by this afternoon because they're requesting it before we get this piece of legislation put together. And we will be meeting again probably for the IMAC next week. Okay. And here, and I think my chief appraiser here is Misty, she actually created this Grant County Assessors Property Evaluation Program. What this is, and this is the final of everything, our jobs in the assessor's office are so tied in on our own normal duties, okay? Thanks to Charlene, she actually helps us off on the reappraisal plan. We will be hiring some temps so we can actually be out there to pick up value. And I don't want to sound like the man that I'm here to pick up value, my goodness, I just want everybody to pay their fair share of tax and be put on the books properly, okay? That's all I'm asking. But the problem in hand, we have over, we have over 37,000 parcels, we've got 3,000 some odd acre miles, but for the county because we're the third largest county in, you know, in the county, in the whole state of New Mexico. And to be honest, it's virtually impossible for us to be out there to pick up all that and there's so much valuation. The last time Misty and I went just to do some spot checking outside of the Hila Cliff area, I mean, I don't know how much value we picked on within those two days. And can you imagine if we went through all the other counties? So whenever you receive this, and it's going to be like about a 47-page document where it's going to break down how many sick days, it's going to break down how many vacation days. And if you really look at it, for the appraisals here in the assessor's office, for only six employees, we're looking at about 7,000 accounts per employee, okay, that we have to take care of, okay? And I could pretty much justify anytime that we put anything on the books where it's net new or valuation maintenance, it is reoccurring revenue. So that document's going to come in also, but it's, like I said, about a 47-page doc. So, that document's gonna come in also, but it's, like I said, about a 47-page doc. Actually, let me back up one. No, everything's fine. I thought I'd missed something. So, now, I actually placed this helpful tip on the rendition period. What happens if you're three percent cap? What happens if the market's lower than a three percent cap? The answer is, it's not gonna be lower. I don't think it's ever gonna be lower with the three percent cap because of the inequities of the cap or the valuations through the whole county. So, I've gone to every senior center, I've gone to every business, Chamber of Commerce, and I've actually given all this information. This is off the internet, I've all broken it down with the realtors. So, this information, any question that needs to be asked to the, to any exemptions, rendition periods, 65-year-old older, veteran exemptions, 100% exemptions, and then later on, I can discuss more about what's going on with the exemption due to the fact that it does erode the tax base. But that's another story. And John Arthur Smith, Senator of Denny, Luna County, has really broken it down because we've done so much exemptions here in the state that it's actually eroded the tax base. And it's two sides, and I would just like to say that I've really enjoyed this five-man commission, and I think we're gonna, we're going to actually move forward and, and I think, I think we're gonna bring in more revs through the county. And I'd like to show one photograph that I just love where I'm quite happy to see my new commissioners. And there they are. And...
Have you seen the old one too?
Oh, the old one's, you know, they're sitting in the vehicle. But I would just like to state, if there's any questions, please, and my doors are open for any time you guys wanna come in to, to discuss any, any information on my certifications, my PTD ones, two, threes, elevens, and thirteens, my abstracts, my words, anything that you guys wanna know on what's going on and the prediction of what the values are going at. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Carl? I'm surprised you're not in the house.
We have time, right? All right. Thank you all for indulgence. Well, on the special method of assessment, if those properties were valued at market rates, do you have any sense of what additional revenue would come in? And I understand that's not all county revenue, but give me a total and I can do the rest of it.
You know what, I'm so glad you brought that up because I had an individual that was working in livestock, was very passionate on coming up with the figures and so on. If you just look at one county, I'm not talking at all 33 counties, you're just looking at one county, that would probably generate close to about $3.8 million. That's if everybody would be on, and I'm talking proper on the assessment role as miscellaneous land instead of the grazing. We did speak with the Revenue Stabilization Tax Policy Committee where we did break these numbers to them. So, if you calculate those numbers on the larger, it's amazing how much revenue that would bring into the state.
All right. The one county surely makes a difference, which county you pick. Is that one county you're talking about?
No, this is not one.
An average, that's Grant County.
This is just Grant County. This is a, this has been, this has been an enormous white elephant that we've been dealing through. It's been like that since day one when they created the special method evaluation. And that value has stayed on as the $5.40 since they started with the special method evaluation.
And you mentioned Senator Smith, the Chair of the Senate Finance Committee, is he interested in changing that special method?
Absolutely.
That's something that might come up in session?
Yeah, that's another, that's another interesting thing that I could really bring up is we don't receive any affidavits when it comes down to the non-residential value. What that means is, let's say, they did sell a chunk of land that was on its grazing, and what happens, that affidavit is only on the residential side because we don't have full disclosure here in the state of New Mexico. When that disclosed information, let's say we have it on the books for $5.40 an acre and it sells for $3,000 to $4,000 an acre, we don't have that information. And that's one of the problems here in the state of New Mexico, and I just wanted you to know, this is comparing apples to oranges here whenever we talk about full disclosure and bringing in our affidavits on the residential side and the non-residential side.
So, there's a little data behind that 3.4 million estimate you gave me earlier if we don't actually have the market data?
No, that is correct. That is correct.
Someone's guess.
Yeah, it is pretty much of a guess due to the fact that this county is so enormous where we really need to break it down on so many ways on the residential and non-residential side.
You mentioned self-rendering, that we're a self-rendering state, and then we saw the statistics about the number of property, of business licenses dramatically exceeding the number that are on the books. Presumably, many of those businesses have property. What is the enforcement mechanism you have to force?
Actually, in the past, when we were pretty much fully staffed, we actually would go to the properties and do an inventory on the personal property. And we actually have a list under Marshall Swift manuals where we actually plug in the numbers. I did that prior to early, in the late 80s and the early 90s. However, the thing of the matter is, is we don't have the staff to be out there picking up all this value.
But if it's self-rendering, let's say I declare my property's worth $1,000 and you decide no, it's worth $10,000, is there some method by which you get to trump my self-evaluation?
You know, no, I, whatever you render, that's what you put out of books.
So, additional staff might embarrass people, but it wouldn't necessarily impact actual assessment?
It would impact to a certain extent, but those are the ones that are not on the books because they do have a protesting period of time. If we do put them on as what values that we think that has to be put on, and that's actually based on also the state assessed properties. And the property tax division, and I'm jumping also on the rendering situation, is also state assessed. They place, they render, they have the proper procedures to protest the valuation.
Okay. On the three percent, after the three percent cap, is that cumulative? Let's say, I've been lucky, my property has not had a higher appraisal in several years. Can you come in five years after the last adjustment and adjust it 15%?
No, no, absolutely not. As it's on the books, you just increase it three percent per year. No, once, the only, the only, the only changes on that is when the property sells, that's when we actually remove the cap, put it on this market, and we do not go back. But if it, you see, we can't remove the cap, we already gone to the Supreme Court, and the reason we had to do that, because we tried to remove the cap. And the cap cannot be removed due to the fact that it's constitutional that you have to leave it in there.
Sure, I'm just wondering if you can average it? If you can say, we haven't raised this property for several years, therefore, three percent per year makes nine percent over the three years.
Because that's where you gotta be at the portion where it says current incorrect on the state statutes.
And have you seen any estimate of the value of taxes foregone because of the three percent cap?
None at this moment, no, sir. I can go ahead and come up and get that information.
That's it for me.
That's it. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great report. Okay. Move to the item K, approve or disapprove Grant County, excuse me, the grant of utility easement to the town of Hurley in relation to the regional water project. Mischa, you gonna go over that?
So, what you got is, it's an easement that Hurley right now is the one that's in dire straits for getting water as part of this regional water program, so, or project. So, the well field is on private property, but they need to get the water line across Grant County property over by the airport. So, that easement that you have in your packet shows where that's gonna be going across the airport property. We are getting a water tap as, you know, kind of a thank you. It'll be in the L2 section that will allow us to tap in at a later date to give water to the airport, especially if we move forward with any economic development activities out there. And you can see they highlight different areas that, as it goes outside of Grant County where that, you know, doesn't pertain to the, to the Grant County property easement. And they're trying to keep it as close to the edge of the property for expansions, and then it also shows on there that we do have a proposed expansion of a runway, and they're gonna bury it deeper just for that expansion, so.
Okay. Any questions from Mischa? No? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant of utility easement to the town of Hurley in relation to the regional water project.
A second. Motion to the second to approve the grant of utility easement to the town of Hurley? Is there any discussion on that motion? Is there any representatives from Hurley? No? Okay. All in favor? Six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Move to agreements. Approve or disapprove, um, approve or disapprove amendment number one to the agreement, 1620 grant agreement with the Department of Finance Administration Local Government Division for the fiscal year 2017 DWI grant number 17DJG10. We went over that on Tuesday. Is there any, no? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, motion to approve amendment number one to agreement number eight, 1620 grant agreement with the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division for the fiscal year 2017 DWI grant number 17DJG10.
I'd have you to second that motion. There's a motion and a second to approve A1620. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions. Approve or disapprove resolution number R1701, Open Meetings Act for 2017. We went over this on Tuesday, made a couple of little changes. Anybody have anything else? So, there is that exception motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll approve.
Move to approve?
Move to approve. Resolution number R17-01, Open Meetings Act for 2017.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution R1701. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R1702, Notice of Intent to Consider Low-Income Rebate Ordinance. Our council has encouraged us to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve resolution number R17-02. I'd like to second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve R1702. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R1703, Fleming Tank Road and Wind Canyon Estates Subdivision Community Area Improvement District Confirmation of the Assessment Role. We had a hearing on this previously, there was no discussion.
I move to approve R1703.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve R1703. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R1704, Publication of Legal Notice of Intent to Adopt an Ordinance Number O1701 Fleming Tank Road and Wind Canyon Estates Improvement District Assessment Levy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve resolution for R17-04.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve R1704. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, I'll take a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
So who?
Second. All those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order, the Grant County Healthcare Claims Board. At this time, we have one item on the agenda. Approve or disapprove December 2016 health plan claims, the old engine fund in the amount of $29,445.91.
Chairman, I move to approve the December 2016 health plan claims, the old engine fund in the amount of $29,445.91.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the, the health plan claims. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, there is.
You saw them. Actually, just to stress, I think, would be possible to have some sense of the balance remaining in that fund when we see these monthly requests, so I have some sense of how we're doing?
We can get that, yeah.
Okay, that's all, otherwise I have no issues at all.
Okay, I don't think anybody wants to come off the top of their head and say it's mine.
Perfect, exactly.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Healthcare Claims Board?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Call back to order, the Grant County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we'll stand for elected officials report. Sheriff, your tokayo took all your time.
I'll be brief. Just wanna welcome the new commissioner. I look forward to working with you guys in the next two years, and I see it as a positive thing, and I look forward to that. I just wanted to go real brief over our stats for the year of 2016 in the sheriff's office. We actually answered 6,878 calls for service during the year, which is a little increase from last year. And we took 1,705 reports, we investigated 150 motor vehicle collision reports, that's down because state police has been helping us quite a bit more with taking on the traffic crashes, so that's, that's taken a little bit of weight off of our shoulders. I wanna go briefly into our civil process division. We did 141 transports round trip throughout the year of 2016, and that's going to the prisons, going on, on transports, doing different things that civil process does, which equaled a total of 64,247 miles that they did throughout 2016. In that same division, being that we serve civil process, they, with the division that I have, we served a total of 8,019 papers in 2016, which includes 151 DVOs, 3,490 subpoenas, 2,083 summons, 2,192 notices of different civil process, and we served 103 rev restitution. So, they were pretty busy, that's a five-man division, and they did quite a bit of work in the year of 2016. Other than that, we've been fairly busy. Right now, I'm fully staffed, I'm pleased to announce that, and we're running, running pretty good, just trying to keep up with what's being thrown at us. So, we'll continue to operate and run as best as we can. So, I wanna thank my staff for a great year that we had in 2016. It was fairly busy as I reported, and I wanna thank them for what they do. You know, they do a lot for this community and not just here at work, they do extra activities in regards to our duties. But other than that, you know, I thank them for everything and I look forward to working with you guys. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer, other than that, so I have to report.
And Sheriff, any questions? Good Sheriff.
Alfred?
Morning, Chairman.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
I have a report here, Mr. Treasury Officer Adam Daz is gonna be here today, so I put a report that he gives monthly for property taxes. As of today, we are at, percentage-wise, 92.65% of collection. Of course, you know, we try to hit 100, but we usually average about 96% collection, broken down into, this is just county, non-residential and residential, and debt service. We had a pretty good second, we were, I think, believe, last month, we were a little over 50%, now we're at 92, so we're all on our way. Gives you the breakdown, of course, since the last report to, from December the 13th till now, as far as non-residential, residential, and debt service for a total grant collection of 409,000 from last month to yesterday, or today on that. Also, one of the things that I do wanna advise you all and the public is, we have New Mexico Property Tax Division here in our office working our delinquent taxes from 2013. We will be having a sale on those properties, they've said either March, April, somewhere's in that area. Letters have been sent out from their office to these people. We have already started getting some people coming in and making payments, so, you know, the, I believe, the list that we sent, well, well over 200 accounts that were sent, they've kind of dwindled it down to... sent, they've kinda dwindled it down to a hundred and some. Uh, then yesterday, we had a few people come in and paying, so, uh, you know, it's working, it's working and, uh, up until, they have up until the day of the sale, nine, uh, nine AM to get in here and, and pay it, so usually it works and we dwindled down to just a handful of, of properties to be sold, so. I just wanna let the public know that, you know, please, when you get those, uh, those letters, uh, call our office or call the numbers that are on the letter, cause they are in our office, uh, as we speak, they'll probably be here for about another month, so. Are there nev, have any questions?
Any questions? The ninety-two point six five percentage figure-
Yes, sir.
Uh, that refers to the percent that should have been paid by first half?
Well, this, this is first and second half.
Even though second half isn't due yet?
Exactly, yeah. A lot of people and, and our last meetings that I, I noticed that, we've noticed in our office as we collected taxes, uh, from November to, to December, is people are paying in full because they have the money and they don't know what's gonna happen down the road, uh, stuff, so we did notice a trend in full payment as far as, uh, property taxes, you know, instead of the half.
Interesting.
Yes.
So when I look at the, uh, the grand total at the bottom, I see four point three million collected and one point eight million outstanding. Four point three million out of six point one million or so is sixty-seven percent or so, not ninety-two. So now that you tell me that it, it's based on full, not on first half, I'm having trouble squaring those two figures.
Yeah, what Mr. Armand Daz does is he takes, uh, the percentages, it's broken down into what we call an authority report, uh, and he's only taking, he's, he's taking the amounts on the county side only, not, cause we know, as you know, I know, we do distribute to schools and to municipalities out there, so he takes the percentages from the county, non-residential and residential side of, and the debt service, of course, of the county only. And, uh, once he takes those percentages, of course, he could, he has a formula he does that takes, divided by three, then that's how he arrives to this, uh, to this number. I'm sure that, uh, when he comes back, anybody wanna visit with him and go over this a little bit more than-
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Very welcome.
Anybody else? Questions? Hey, Alfred, would you let, um, Mr. Armand Daz know that, uh, that he and his family are in our thoughts with his, his dad being ill and, um, I, I know all of us, uh, send our prayers and thoughts and he, they're in our heart. You bet. Oh, you got more?
Just a little bit, if it's okay.
It's okay.
We're starting on that. We congratulate the new commissioners and I want to congratulate you being the chair. You have done exceptional job for the last six years and I congratulate you there Ramos, uh, for being the vice chair. But, uh, I would be approved, if I wouldn't say this, um, Murray Ryan, Representative Murray Ryan, um, I was only twenty-three, twenty-four years old, where I was at the Roundhouse, I was, uh, wearing a leisure suit, briefcase, the whole thing, going in committee. And the high heels, don't you forget that? And, uh, the biggest education I ever got was from Mr. Ryan, because we were in committee and I'll never forget this, and, uh, we're, we're sitting in committee and we were talking about full disclosure, I remember, and, uh, he voted against full disclosure after we had a discussion and he, uh, he said he was gonna vote for it. So after the, uh, the meeting, I questioned him. I will never do that again. He took me out and I was right through the coals and, uh, and the respect for, that I have for that man, uh, is, is enormous, because, uh, he, he knew his tax laws, he knew, uh, the legislature, but, uh, that was my first experience with Mr. Ryan, I mean Representative Ryan, but, uh, like I said, I would have never questioned him after that, but I, we're gonna miss him. Uh, a short couple of things is, um, I do wanna thank my employees, they've done a great job, uh, we're breaking down each, uh, position for each, uh, employees, even though we're cross-trained, uh, we did talk about the rendition period, what's going on in a rendition period where the sixty-five-year and older, and that's the one that a lot of people are actually asking questions. You have to be sixty-five years and older, combined income to accept the, to, to, uh, qualify for the freeze. You have to show proof of income and show, show that you're sixty-five years and older. You do it for three years, um, after the three years, then it stays in the system until the property transfers or something happens to the, uh, the individual. Uh, we are, I am attending the New Mexico Association of Counties, um, legislative opening session for, uh, for next week on the eighteenth, nineteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth. Uh, I congratulate, um, Ramos for being on the board of directors and, um, uh, that's very, one of the most important positions that, um, that sits statewide and, uh, I would like to say that, uh, I just got appointed for the, uh, New Mexico Economic Development Infrastructure Policy Committee, uh, through the president of the NMAC and, uh, we'll be meeting on Thursday afternoon after this, after the NMAC, uh, uh, openings, uh, mid-winter and, uh, they first asked me if I wanted to be on the tax policy committee, anything to do with taxes, and I just said, you know what? I need a new venue. I need something different, so I am so glad that I was appointed for this committee and I will give you a complete report and, like I said, we'll be meeting on the Thursday at one forty-five. Everything is running pretty good in my office, so we're gonna be pretty busy due to the rendition period. Uh, we're on the process for, uh, the two thousand and seventeen where we will be mailing out the notices of valuation April one, like we always do. You do have a protest period by then and you still have until the end of May for your sixty-five years and older veteran exemptions and head of household. I stand for any questions and I'm, I'm gonna say anymore.
I just wanna say one thing. Everybody that's gone to the legislature at one time or another has the exact same story. And it may not, it may have been Representative McCherry, it may have been Representative Foy, it may have been Senator Altamirano, but yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody-
Delivered and better.
If you haven't been, you will have it. So, any questions, Phil? You guys, sure? All right. Uh, we'll move on to, um, Ms. Webb, do you have anything else today?
Yes.
You do not? Okay, well, then, Mr. Brad, uh, Ms., sorry. I, I forget Rob, I forgot Rob all the time, too.
Commissioners, I'm looking really forward to working with you guys. Um, business as usual in the clerk's office, um, there's been a slight change. I'd like to, um, introduce our new chief deputy, Connie Hoagie. She's been with the office for nineteen years. Um, and, uh, Elizabeth Gomez is also, um, now the Bureau of Elections Director. We're going right back into election season, or election mode, I should say. Um, we've got a school board election that's coming up, we've got early voting that does begin tomorrow, uh, for both districts in the Grant County Clerk's Office, eight to five, so if you guys have any questions, let us know.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was remiss there.
I'd like to make a comment, too.
Sure.
I, congratulations, I, I really take it to heart that you all are our county clerk and our chief deputy. I, I'd like to say that I'm very proud to have been the person that hired you all into the clerk's office way back when, when I guess, say, how many years ago, but, but it was around twenty. And, uh, again, congratulations to you all, I'm very proud to see you all have moved up and, uh, taken the responsibility to be the county clerk for, for the county and the assistant, thank you.
Commissioner, were you in this building when you were clerk?
Yes, sir.
Or were you starting the other one?
Uh, we started in the other one and ended up here.
Okay. I knew that role, it started in the other.
Sure.
Clerk. It's my understanding that there's been a change in the law that would allow a combination of elections with school board and with the general. Do you have, are you knowledgeable on that or do you have an opinion on that?
It's, it's pretty much a new thing that's going on right now, so, um, we're gonna, um, look at everything. I don't really have anything solid for you, but we'll look at it and if I can definitely get back to you with that if you like.
Anything's might be a way to save some money and also get, generate some interest in the school board.
I think it's a really, my personal opinion, I think it'd be a really good idea to get to, to do all of this, um, definitely money-wise and just, um, if we can combine, there's a lot of work that does go into elections, if we can combine everything, I'm hoping that there'd be more interest and there'd be a lot more voters to get out there, so it'd be a really good thing.
Thanks.
So, um, Commissioners, as, as you've witnessed from out there, each meeting, we give you an opportunity to say, uh, a parting thought and today I'm gonna start with Commissioner Brown.
Chairman, it's, it's been an enjoyable first regular meeting and I appreciate your chairmanship. Uh, I have a couple of things I wanted to say. One is, um, the hospital, we've all noted, is an extremely important project to this county, uh, extremely important asset. I think that the Gila River diversion is as important. And I think it would be useful to us to have a monthly update on, on what's going on. And of course, that could be quite brief, because I, I realize not a lot happens in many months, uh, but if it were a regular part of the agenda, I think that would reflect its potential importance, uh, I would appreciate hearing what's going on from our representatives. So I wanted to, to make that request, it's nothing that obviously you need to respond to at this point. Um, I do understand that, uh, between the ISC and the cap entity, we've spent, uh, a little over seven million dollars at this point of the sixty-six or so that were, that were given to any sort of water project and I think, as is well known in the, during the campaign, I'm concerned about that bleeding of money that we could have used and possibly could still use for other projects, so, uh, thank you. And then the second thing, uh, is that on January twenty-one, Silver City, Grant County will see, uh, what is being called a people's procession. Uh, it is to express our community's support for diversity, compassion and understanding in the face of threats, both promised and implied. Uh, it starts at noon at La Capilla, the heart of my district, and, uh, will, uh, proceed down Arizona Street to Spring, to Bullard, to Goth Park eventually, and it will end with roughly a half an hour or an hour of, uh, music and speakers at Goth Park and I encourage everyone to come, we're all in this together, everyone's invited. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You betcha. Mr. Billings?
Um, I don't have anything.
It's fine, you don't, you, it's not a requirement. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say, um, thank you to everyone for being here today. The first meeting was pretty okay. Um, I would like to, um, just say a, a huge thank you to Charlene and her staff, um, uh, everybody, uh, in this building is just, um, a bunch of wonderful, hardworking people that have really, um, helped me get started as a commissioner and I really appreciate that. And then, um, I just wanna say that, uh, I'm really excited about working with the five-member commission. I really appreciate, uh, having gotten to know all of you and I really look forward to, um, a very productive and, uh, interesting, uh, next few years, so thank you very much.
Vice Chairman Ramos?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, uh, thank everyone for another good year of, everyone's been working so hard in this county, I don't think anybody realizes how much work is done, not only by our maintenance department, but, but, by our administration also. You all do a really good job and, and thanks for keeping us out of trouble, we appreciate that.
I know.
You know, a, a big responsibility for, for us as commissioners is make sure that this, this county runs well, especially when it comes to funds and budgets, but, uh, the main thing is that, uh, I, I feel that we shouldn't be, uh, micromanagers and depend on our, on our manager to do her job and she's done a great job so far and we appreciate you, Charlene. Also, you know, Murray Ryan was great to us, I still remember approaching him the first time I ran for office, twenty years ago, and, uh, you know, he never discouraged anyone, but always encouraged everyone to participate in the election process and he was a good man, anytime you'd see him anywhere, he'd, he'd call you by your first name, or your last name and, uh, and just be really happy to see you and give you some more advice and ask you what's going on in the community, so, uh, he was a great man and we'll always remember him. Thank you again to elected officials for, uh, allowing me to serve as the New Mexico Association of Counties Board of Director. I'll do the best I can. Of course, we're not all perfect, but, uh, if you do have questions and, uh, want me to help you out with getting something through, uh, let me know. Uh, board of directors is an, is an important position and, uh, I, I feel that the, the biggest, uh, asset that we've got is the board of directors, so that we can try and get some of these, uh, policies through, through our legislate, through our legislators. Melissa, again, welcome. Connie, welcome and, uh, thank you all for the service you all have already done, but, uh, we're looking forward to see what you've got for us the next, uh, four years.
Thank you again, that's all I've got. Thank you. Commissioner? Well, I too wanna congratulate the new commissioners on being elected and serving, uh, it's a, um, it's, it's sometimes it's a burden, sometimes it's a blessing, uh, you'll see both sides of it. Melissa, welcome. Great first meeting, I'm so happy to have you here and the reelection of our, our treasurer was also nice. Congratulations, Commissioner Ramos, for being the first vice chairman of Grant County's history.
Thank you.
I truly am gonna enjoy the diverse input that's gonna spur such lively debate. Not being able to have conversations for the last six years has really, I, I know that what, what they were intending when they made that law, but really it impeded progress. We're gonna, we're gonna, you're gonna see things out of this commission that are great. Uh, everybody here is really putting Grant County first. We won't always agree on everything, you'll see votes that go three, two, four, one, uh, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. Um, I, I, I'm just honored to, to be, uh, the, the chairman of the first five-person commission and I want you guys to know that my door's always open, I'll answer any question I can, as honestly as I can and as promptly as I can and, uh, I think that's all I have to say today, is anybody want some seconds, sir? Okay, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna go into a- Oh, I'm sorry.
I added the wrong lines, so, uh, Commissioner Brown, you're at sixty point four, six percent, you are correct. I added the total, cause I run a tenure report and I ran the total instead of the two thousand sixteen numbers, sixty point four, six percent. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. The commissioner would like seconds.
So, um, I didn't know until the other day, uh, until work session that that had been, that the five-member commission had been something that you had been working on for so long. I think it's a fantastic thing for this county and thank you very much for, uh, for making it happen, for your part in making it happen and congratulations on being the first chair of the five-member commission.
I actually campaigned on it the first time I ran for office, so. It was kinda, kinda odd, I looked at, uh, all the things that I campaigned for, uh, it was actually eight years ago, cause those, those of you that forgot, I lost once, um, to a very heavily contested election, but, uh, um, I've completed all of them. I am so tickled to death. Commissioner Brown, you don't know me if you think I'm a kickback guy. So, uh, with that being said, what we're gonna do now is we are going to go into executive session in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, ten, fifteen, one, H eight and this is a discussion of potential disposal of real property currently owned by Grant County. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? So move.
I'll second.
There's a motion to the second to move into executive session. All those in favor, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Can I get a roll call vote, Ms. Clerk? Can I get a roll call vote for that? All you gotta do is call everybody's name and head down and say yes or no.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ramos?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Billings?
Yes.